A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Paul Cassidy?
Here.
Tanya Hogan? Here. Jerry Golka?
Here.
Johnna Boyer?
Here.
Mark Burchard?
Here.
Right, before we go to public comment-
Hold on, I didn't finish.
Oh, go ahead.
Maureen Bory, absent, excuse. Beverly Rose?
Here.
We're going to follow the Roberts Rules of Order. In terms of public comment on an agenda item, this is a public's opportunity to comment on an agenda item only. Please state your name and address for the record. Please wait to be recognized by the Chair. All comments are to be made to the Chair. You are prohibited in order not to violate this rule or to be unruly making comments from the audience or even clapping and applauding. You have three minutes to speak. You're not allowed to direct your address to a specific member of the Board. Your statement must be directed to the Chair. In the later part of public comments, you'll have an opportunity to speak for three minutes. Please make any post-meeting comments at the end of the meeting. Again, you do not speak until you are recognized by the Chair. Again, you are not allowed to make comments to or about any member. Violation of this rule will not be tolerated and could cause your removal from the meeting. We're simply asking people to be civil and to be orderly. And those that refuse to be civil and orderly will take measures. So with that, we'll start with public comments.
Excuse me, I'd like to make an amendment to the agenda. 1K.
I'll second.
I'd like to talk about the algae wheel.
All right, anyone in favor of doing that? Please indicate by aye.
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 opposed? All right, it's added. Okay, we'll go to public comments. Please state your name, ma'am, and go ahead.
Wendy. And I don't really have a comment. I would just like the Board to pay attention when we speak. This is our time to speak and we would like your full attention while we speak. Thank you.
You said this is Roberts Rules. The agenda itself, which I thought that's what we have to go by is the agenda, that actually says, "Public comments." It doesn't say, "Public comments for agenda items only." So if we're going strictly, you know, by Roberts Rules, that's what the agenda item does say in there. So at the August 18 meeting, Mr. Cassidy tried to have me removed by police while I was speaking. And let me be clear, I was speaking directly on an agenda item opposing taxpayer funding for Treasury Golka's retreats. As part of my remarks, I read a verbatim statement that Treasury Golka himself published on Facebook. So suppressing speech is censorship. And I really did not appreciate that. At the May 27 meeting, Mr. Cassidy admitted that OHM started work only on his signature. His words, "They did work on my signature, waiting for me to ratify-"
Ma'am, this is not an agenda item you're speaking on.
Okay, but-
You're not speaking on an agenda item. I expressed myself at the start of the meeting, "This is for agenda items." If you want to speak on anything else, wait until the end of the meeting.
Can we have a police officer let me know? I would prefer going by what a police officer said. If this is rules because the Michigan Open Meeting Act does say we're supposed to follow the agenda. And if I'm wrong on that, I would love to be corrected. But the agenda item does say, "Public comments."
I'm correcting you, ma'am. I'm asking you to please keep your remarks on an agenda item. That's all.
Well, can I ask you to ask the police if that would be? Because I would prefer listening to them than to you.
Ma'am, you're not running the meeting, I am.
I'm not trying to run the meeting. I'm just trying to go by what it says on the agenda. And last-
I just explained it to everyone at the start of the meeting that this is agenda items only.
Then, did you make a motion to amend the agenda? Because that's now it is.
I'm not going to argue with you. I'm just telling you.
Well-
You can speak at the end of the meeting on anything, but right now it's on an agenda item.
Then, the agenda needs to reflect that. Please, they really do need to follow rules. It's not just for us on this side, it's on that side too. The agenda does say, "Public comments." I'm just going by the agenda that's supposed to be... I mean, can you just explain to me if that is true or not? Or could I have a police officer let me know if that is something that I'm doing incorrectly?
When they take you out of here, I'll have them tell you.
Okay, that's a little bit backwards, though.
Thank you.
I'm not going to ruin, I'm not going to waste people's time.
Please have a seat.
Mark Coletti, Harsons Island. In terms of 1A, the Champion Auto Ferry SEMCOG sponsorship. My heart hopes that the supervisor will sign the sponsorship, but my brain knows he won't because he is a former Haida Board Member. Haida's goal is to own and operate a second ferry. Haida has two articles of incorporation that says they will do, quote, "all things necessary," end quote, to do this. So in an ideal world, Champion could have just gone to Haida directly. But since Haida insists on having 69-page file on their website that directly chastises Champion and the family, then no wonder why they came here instead. If the supervisor does reject this, I would suggest that the Board sign the sponsorship regardless and then go to the state level. Jay DeBoyer is on the Haida contact list, along with other names in Lansing. And I think this would help get the sponsorship through. And in addition, if the state representatives ask why Haida wasn't involved, you can tell them that Haida's gone rogue and they abandoned their abundant duties. In terms of the fluoride, as you can tell, I've been fluoride-free for five years. So if you want more people like me, take the fluoride out. If you want less people like me, leave it in. The original fluoride study was bogus. It would never pass a modern-day peer review process and the study was not reproducible or repeatable. Fluoride is a byproduct of industrial processes. Corporations are making huge profits selling their waste to public water departments. Whey protein is also the same way. There are no dental benefits. I don't go to the dentist. I've been there three times in eight years. As long as you floss, brush, and mouthwash, that's really what's important. In terms of the cognitive effect, I mean, look around. Most of us don't live a healthy lifestyle to begin with. So fluoride is minimum. But if anyone does wish to go fluoride-free, it's real simple. Just drink distilled water and drink fluoride-filtered water. And then also use a shower filter. That'll remove the fluoride and the other unnatural heavy elements. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sarah Clements. Regarding the Addus Law Firm agenda item, I support last week's Board decision to immediately end utilizing Addus Law Firm. Mr. Cassidy has an existing personal relationship with Mr. Addus. He used him as a personal attorney in the past and even had him file a personal lawsuit against the previous Clay Township Supervisor. I strongly feel that utilizing Addus is a huge conflict of interest for our township. If our Board decides that a second legal counsel is necessary, using an outside, independent legal firm with no prior ties to Mr. Cassidy seems to me to be the most appropriate. Additionally, any secondary or additional counsel should be a Board decision and not solely just the supervisors. And finally, I just want to thank Maureen Bory for her service to this township.
Mark Burchard, 739 North Channel. I'm here to comment on the grant issue that Jacob is going for. I'm not sure where this whole ferry thing is going to play out, when, if, or how. So I mean, that's still to be determined. But I would encourage this Board to table this issue until all the Board members, especially Bev, who hasn't been here that long, has an opportunity to read and understand everything that has transpired with the ferry and Jacob up to this point. There's a lot of information out there that maybe some of the Board has chose not to read, but Bev has not been privy to also. So I think in fairness, it should be tabled until everybody can digest what has been said. I also find it really interesting that for all those people that didn't want this Board, this township, to get involved in a private industry, the ferry now wants to get money for the ferry. I find it really interesting that he's going after government money in the form of a grant. And nowhere in the letter, because I read the letter online, does it say anything about ferry cost or anything else like that. And I don't think he should be entitled to money for poor management of his money. If he needs equipment replaced, he should have budgeted for that. I would have to budget for it. And never in my years of being self-employed have I been able to go to the government and say, "Listen, I need a new beer cooler. Please let me get a grant for it." Thank you.
Harold Bain, 757 North Channel, Harsons Island. I am requesting the Board to table this vote for Champion's Auto Ferry to receive a proposed grant. I believe an additional information is necessary to make the informed decision. For instance, do you know where the M90 corridor is? I mean, how is that going to affect Champion's Auto Ferry? Oh, and by the way, there will be a Haida meeting in September. Thank you.
Bruce Swikart, representing San Suzy. I don't, the whole town, actually. Well, I have an opportunity to speak when it comes up as an agenda right now. Because-
If you're recognized by the Board, you can speak. Not if you're not recognized by the Chair.
Well, I'll take a little shot at it right now. What we're having the problem with is now, apparently, two people are working with Eagle for the septic plant, which I was unaware of today. Eagle has two proposals in front of them, not even similar. That really doesn't work that well. And paying two people to do the same job, the fund is not endless. And there has to be, at some point, say, stop or go. It just can't keep going like this. But if Eagle, we have one proposal. My understanding is mitigation fees are involved, a second one where there's no mitigation fees involved. Obviously, I know which way I'd go with it at this point. But maybe I'll get to speak later. Thank you.
If there's no further comment, we'll move on to bills payable. We have bills payable, $142,658.64.
I'll make a motion that we pay the bills for $142,658.64.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Do a roll call.
Johnna Boyer?
Yes.
Mark Burchard?
Yes.
Tanya Hogan? Yes. Paul Cassidy?
Yes.
Jerry Golka?
Yes.
Beverly Rose?
Yes.
All right, we'll go past Supervisor's report. We'll go to consent agenda. We have the minutes?
I will make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the meeting minutes from 8:11:25, the in-between meetings from 8:21:25, and the resignation of trustee Maureen Bory.
Support. Any discussion?
I just want to discuss one quick thing with the resignation of Maureen. Do we want to plan on going the same route we went last time and doing interviews? And we can possibly do interviews at our next meeting? So it narrows-
Does anybody wish to discuss that issue?
Got lucky with me. Should do that again.
I think what Tanya said is appropriate.
Can we contact the past ones that applied to see if they're still interested?
Yeah.
And accept-
What we have to do is we'll just publish it on the website, let people apply.
Okay.
How do we do that? You have a motion then on the consent agenda?
We have a motion in a second.
In a second?
Yep.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed? Go to new business. 1A, DPW hiring of utility personnel, labor, Miles Honaki?
Hojanaki.
Hojanaki, okay. Go ahead. Please tell us, Lance.
Well, we are in need of help. And Miles is a very good candidate for our department. He's a good welder, he's mechanically inclined, and hopefully has a very good work ethic.
How do you know this gentleman? I'm asking Mr. Surti, how do you know this?
Mostly from his application that he turned in.
Oh, okay, all right. Does anybody have any issues on this?
I have a question. You live in Clay Township?
No, I live in Algonak.
Where do you live at? How far?
What's that?
Where do you live?
In Algonak.
Oh, okay. Close enough to Clay Township. Perfect. Looks like you've got some backhoe and excavator experience, Miles?
Yep, a little bit.
I can say I was in, Lance and I interviewed him together, and we both agreed that he would be a very good fit for the team we have going on right now.
All right, want to call the vote?
Well, we got to make a motion.
I'll make a motion. That way, hire Miles Hojanak for DPW.
I'll second.
All right. Roll call.
Sure. Beverly Rose?
Yes.
Jerry Golka?
Yes.
Paul Cassidy?
Yes.
Tanya Hogan?
Yes.
Mark Burchard?
Yes.
Johnna Boyer?
Yes.
Go to 1D. Promotion of Parks Man. Congratulations.
Parks Man, Clay Township DPW, how are you tonight?
Good evening. What do you have to say, Mr. Surti?
He's gone with the Department many years. He's definitely senior. And I rely on him a lot right now.
What level is he? Is he a level S1, S2?
Four. He is an S4.
S4, okay.
And we have, the whole group has signed up that they approved that the last meeting, everybody's going to write for their S licenses come in November, so.
Does anybody have any questions for-
I got a couple of comments. I've known Parks for quite a few years. And I've known him to be an honest and true worker, as well as a person. And it seems like every time I drive down 23, and there's a hole in the ground, it's at the bottom of it.
Did I run into you when you were fixing that water? The antennas?
I believe so.
Yeah.
Thanks, Mark.
So Lance, this is a vacant possession currently?
Yes.
Want to call a vote?
You got to make a motion.
I'll make a motion to promote Parks Man.
I'll second.
Go ahead, call the vote.
Mark Burchard?
Yes.
Tanya Hogan? Yes. Paul Cassidy?
Yes.
Jerry Golka?
Yes.
Beverly Rose?
Yes.
Johnna Boyer?
Yes.
Thank you. Congratulations.
1C, Fire Hire Part-Time Firefighter Evan Collinger.
Good evening. I'm requesting permission from the Board to hire one part-time, new part-time firefighter. Evan worked for East Point for two years. Evan has his Firefighter 1, Fire 2 certification, and he's also an EMT, State Certified EMT, Michigan State EMT. He's passed his interview, and he's also passed his background check.
Where do you live?
Chesterfield.
Chesterfield? Been at East Point for two years?
Yes, sir.
Who's your chief down there?
Chief Jason Clark.
I'll make a motion to hire part-time firefighter Evan Collinger.
Support. In terms of discussion on the matter, the only issue really is, is that regardless for the reason of the over-budget, we are over-budget on the Fire Department. How does this fit into your budget?
We lost two firefighters.
Okay.
Actually, we lost three. We hired one. And I would like to hire this one to backfill the two vacancies or one of the two vacancies.
And I understand one of the reasons the Fire Department has been having issues with their budget is because people have been having to work overtime because there's not enough to cover the shifts, right?
Correct.
Okay. So this will help that situation?
Is there a motion?
Yep, we have a motion in a second.
All right, call the vote.
Johnna Boyer?
Yes.
Tanya Hogan? Yes. Jerry Golka?
No.
Paul Cassidy?
Yes.
Beverly Rose?
Yes.
Mark Burchard?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Shouldn't Beverly Rose abstain?
Yes, she really should.
Well, it doesn't directly affect me, so, I mean, if you were voting on it-
It's your husband's department. I think you should, but if you don't, you don't-
If you think so, that's fine. Now, if it was his contract we were talking about, I would definitely abstain.
Yep.
This does not affect me.
The issue is, is the department itself, it does affect, which can affect your husband. If you want to abstain, you abstain. If you don't, don't.
I don't feel it's necessary in this circumstance to abstain.
You don't have to abstain. All right.
Congratulations, the motion passed.
Go to 1D, fluoride, the St. Clair County Public Water Systems. We have Dr. Nevin here, I believe. Please state your name and your position with the county, if you would, please.
Yes, so, good evening, thank you very much. I'm Dr. Remington Nevin. I'm the Medical Director, St. Clair County Health Department. And on request, I'm here to provide you with some updates on recent developments in the science and regulatory landscape pertaining to water fluoridation. Last August, the National Toxicology Program concluded with at least moderate confidence that fluoride at concentrations of 1.5 parts per million, or approximately double that currently recommended in municipal water systems, is in fact associated with a risk of neurodevelopmental adverse effects, namely lowered IQ in children. And on reviewing this and other evidence, in September of last year, following a bench trial that first began in June of 2020, a federal district court ordered the Environmental Protection Agency, EPA, to regulate fluoride at its current recommended concentration of .7 parts per million as an unreasonable risk to health under the Toxic Substances Control Act, or TOSCA. The lawsuit behind this action was first filed in April 2017 by the nonprofit organization Food and Water Watch after EPA refused to comply with the group's citizen petition under the TOSCA filed in November 2016, which asserted that a large body of animal, cellular, and human research shows that fluoride is neurotoxic at doses within the range now seen in fluoridated communities. EPA initially denied this petition in February 2017, prompting the litigation at issue. And following several years of motion practice, the initial bench trial began in June 2020, and following this stay resumed two years later, ultimately leading to a review of expert evidence up to and including the August 2024 NTP report that I previously noted. And in a supplemental petition, the plaintiffs had asked EPA to prohibit the addition of fluoridation chemicals to drinking water in order to protect the public, including susceptible subpopulations, from fluoride's neurotoxic risk, noting that an early draft of the NTP monograph had estimated a hazard level of 1.5 parts per million of fluoride in drinking water. Now, in recognition of the fact that EPA sets broad uncertainty factors, typically on the order of 10 or more, to define acceptable levels of other harmful substances, such as carcinogens. After the plaintiffs applied this uncertainty factor of 10 to the 1.5 part per million that NTP had acknowledged with moderate confidence was associated with harm, the plaintiffs argued that a reference concentration of .15 parts per million fluoride in drinking water was more appropriate, and that consequently EPA should find that community water fluoridation at its current, much higher, .7 parts per million, presents an unreasonable risk of harm to the public. And indeed, in its September 2024 ruling, just last year, the court substantially agreed with this reasoning and ordered the EPA to regulate fluoride at its current recommended concentrations as an unreasonable risk to human health. Now, although you may be aware, EPA is appealing this ruling, this is largely on procedural grounds, and it does not appear that EPA is significantly questioning the science on which the court based this decision. Indeed, the evidence is increasingly clear that total fluoride concentrations that are likely to be encountered through both treated water and ingested topical fluoride-containing products, ingested toothpastes, mouthwashes, and so on, does in fact carry an unacceptable risk of neurotoxicity and cognitive impairment, particularly during early development. And accordingly, I believe that it is only a matter of time before EPA does act, possibly to lower maximum acceptable fluoride concentrations in water, but likely, in my opinion, to prohibit the addition of fluoride altogether. Now, somewhat ironically, given the recent election results, I believe had the plaintiffs not filed this lawsuit many years ago, that under this administration, EPA may have already taken the plaintiff's desired action. Under the leadership of its new administration, Lee Zeldin, the EPA is broadly supportive of and sympathetic to these concerns. And particularly in collaboration with other government agencies, such as the Department of Health and Human Services, which is now under the leadership of the staunchly anti-fluoride Robert F. Kennedy Jr., I believe EPA will almost certainly independently find that current levels of fluoridation pose an unreasonable risk as the court has already concluded. And so why is EPA appealing this ruling? I believe the reason is simple. The ruling potentially sets a dangerous anti-industry precedent, which if the pro-Trump administration likely desires to see overturned, despite their sympathy for the ordered action. And indeed, some environmental groups have already cited this recent court decision in similar petitions that are calling on EPA to regulate other chemical processes, such as in the oil and gas industry. So clearly, the ruling itself must be challenged by EPA, although once it is overturned, and I believe it will be overturned on appeal, the EPA, I believe, is likely to voluntarily adopt similar regulations to those that the court has ordered in its September 24 decision. However, this process is likely going to take some time, perhaps six to 18 months for the appeal to play out, and then possibly another six to 18 months for the EPA to draft and then finalize any federal regulations. And so in proactive anticipation of this inevitable federal action, Florida and Utah have recently prohibited the addition of fluoride to their municipal water systems across the entire state. And over a dozen other states, though not Michigan, are considering similar action. And of course, across the nation, many individual municipalities are doing the same, including here in Michigan. And contrary to what you may have been advised, municipalities in Michigan do have complete discretion in this regard. Past ordinances in support of fluoridation adopted decades ago, even by popular vote, should not be considered binding in light of this new evidence of neurotoxicity. And to my knowledge, neither Michigan law nor regulation restrict a municipality's executive or legislative authority or legislative authority to act to remove this potential hazard. And in my opinion, it would be well advised for municipalities such as Algonac and others with water treatment plants to at least consider doing this, as this would be supported by the evidence and be consistent with the precautionary principle and with a proactive concern for the health of its residents. Now, although the court's order is only formally binding on EPA, the rationale articulated by the court in its decision is sound and is supported by the most robust review of scientific evidence conducted to date. The court's findings should thus give cause for other environmental and public health regulators at state and local levels to consider substantially similar actions. And so in my advisory role as the county medical director, I have recommended that the health department adopt proactive local health regulations to formalize such a prohibition across the entire county. Now, this is a recommendation only. I don't have the authority to enact this myself. It would require formal action by both the health officer and by the county board of commissioners. However, as you may be aware, in anticipation of such county action, at least one municipality in St. Clair County, Kimball Township, has already passed a resolution in opposition to the continued fluoridation of their water, which in their case is supplied by Port Huron. And I do expect in the coming weeks to months, several other municipalities in our county will possibly do the same. My understanding is that currently Clay Township receives its water from Algonac City, which currently fluoridates its water. I believe it began in 1949, but that there may be some interest either in Algonac or perhaps here in Clay Township to reconsider this practice. And should either Algonac or Clay Township have questions in this regard, I'm more than happy to do my best to be of assistance as may be requested. Now, our health department is planning a more formal outreach effort on this topic, which I anticipate we will be getting underway in the coming weeks as we continue to debate and consider the merits of a broader countywide health regulation. Our county advisory board of health meets the third Wednesday of each month, 9:00 AM, at the county office building, Don Dodge Auditorium. And so we would encourage interested township officials or residents to share their concerns in this regard, either in person or through submitted correspondence. So again, I'm Dr. Nevin, St. Clair County Health Department, and I'm happy to address any questions that you may have at this time.
Doctor, do you have a feeling for what the county wants to do?
So our advisory board of health is continuing to debate this issue. I believe there is support for a countywide prohibition. Ultimately, it would require a majority vote on the advisory board. If it meets with advisory board approval, then the health officer would need to independently act on that recommendation, formalize and adopt county health regulations. This would take a few months, as our solar regulations did. And then those regulations would need to be submitted to the county board of commissioners for their approval. And so the entire process would probably take six to 12 months. But I do believe across the county, as in many majority red districts across the country, I do believe there is significant support for this measure.
I know you talked with the city of Algonac. Did you get a feeling for their position on this?
Well, I can tell you that Algonac has been approached many times throughout the years. And I say this on good authority. They've been approached many times over the years by concerned residents seeking to remove fluoride from the water system. And for whatever reason, although there had been some modest support for that, where these efforts ran into trouble was when the state got word of these concerns. And typically what happens when a municipality expresses a desire to remove fluoride from their water system, as I believe Algonac has expressed in recent years, the state sends a number of officials to try to dissuade the municipality from removing the fluoride. They state that it's against the law to act independently to remove the fluoride. And many dental advocates will show up and say, you know, terrible things will happen if you remove the fluoride. And so municipalities, I want to choose my words carefully here, but I do think that they have been pressured by state interests to not act in their own authority in recent years to remove fluoride, as is within their authority to do. And this partly underscores why I think county action is necessary, because municipalities have shown time and again, when they consider removing fluoride, they tend to encounter a lot of opposition. But this is something that at the health department, I feel very confident that I could defend against.
Does anybody have any questions for Dr. Nevin?
So would the county regulations supersede the local authority as far as the water plants?
Yeah, they would. Now, of course, as with our solar regulations that recently passed, regulating the siting of large industrial solar facilities in our northern areas where some have been planned, this will obviously be litigated in due course, right? The pro-fluoride interests would obviously litigate our regulations and attempt to argue that the health department lacks authority. But particularly as we saw with COVID, we've seen health departments have extraordinary powers. The argument would be if we can shut your schools down, if we can shut your churches down, if we can shut your businesses down, lock you in your homes and order you to get vaccines and wear masks, we can probably regulate to recognize neurotoxicant in our water supplies. So I do believe that the powers in the public health code do authorize local health departments to regulate fluoride.
Another question. How does this correspond with federal government? They've recently had red dye removed?
Oh, right. Yeah. Well, so I think you're broadly referring to the Maha health agenda under the leadership of RFK Jr. So RFK Jr. is looking to question a lot of standing dogma, right? He's looking at a lot of practices across the country. And fluoridation is one of those things, right? Many public health officials will say fluoridation is one of the top 10 public health achievements of the last century. Well, that may be so, but the facts are increasingly clear that fluoride is neurotoxic. And so under the leadership of RFK Jr., HHS, Health and Human Services, is looking into water fluoridation, looking into things like food dyes, looking into the high sugar content of our children's diet, looking into lots of things. Certainly, the efforts of Florida and Utah municipalities across the country to independently act to remove fluoride from their water systems, I think would be supported by RFK Jr. and his Department of Health and Human Services. Now, I didn't mention the HHS angle to all of this. So although EPA sets enforceable regulations regarding maximum concentrations of fluoride in water, there's also a recommendation side or advisory side, and this is led by HHS. So under HHS, there's the Centers for Disease Control, and there's also the U.S. Preventive Services Task Force. And I do anticipate that in the coming months, potentially as this issue is under consideration by the township and by the county, that we're going to see some change in the recommendations coming from CDC or coming from the U.S. Preventive Services Task Force. Currently, they recommend that municipalities add fluoride to .7 parts per million, but I suspect that under RFK Jr.'s leadership, those recommendations will be altered. Either they will recommend that municipalities consider discontinuing fluoridation, or they may recommend a reduction in the maximum concentration of fluoride. So I do think that this is broadly consistent with RFK Jr.'s health agenda.
So if this action was taken at the county level?
Yep.
Would it be a vote of the commissioners or would it be a ballot initiative? Or how would that be?
So with our solar regulations, which are currently in effect, how the process worked was according to the public health code, a health officer can independently adopt regulations based on their own authority, based on the recommendations and advisement of the medical director, which she has for me. Once those regulations are adopted, they go for public comment. There's a period of public comment where individuals are allowed to submit their thoughts on how potentially to improve the regulations if they support or oppose them. And then after a certain waiting period, the adopted regulations, modified as necessary based on public comment, go before the board of commissioners. And it's a simple majority vote of the commissioners to approve the regulations. And those regulations take the force of law upon adoption or whatever date the commissioners decide to make the regulations applicable from. So our solar regulations went into immediate effect, I believe, May 1 of this year when they were voted on by the board.
Any further, anyone? Thank you, doctor, very much.
Yeah, my pleasure. Thank you very much.
1E, drone liability insurance?
Good evening. This is just the next phase where we're going into with our drones. Our guys are almost to the point right now where they're done with the classroom portion of the FAA training for flying them. So next step, we'll be going into a practical portion, which at that point, that's why I waited till now to look at putting insurance on them. This is budgeted item that we did see coming. And with the cost of these things, this protects them as far as liability and for property damage itself.
Does anybody have any questions for Chief?
Who's your pilots?
We've got three different guys right now that have been training.
They're in training?
Yes.
They haven't been trained yet?
They are almost done with the classroom portion of it. This is everything through the FAA doing the Part 107.
Do we have a motion?
Make a motion to approve drone liability insurance proposal for $4,140. Out of line on 207-000910.
Support.
All right, take a roll call.
Mark Burchard?
Yes.
Tanya Hogan?
Yes.
Paul Cassidy?
Yes.
Jerry Golka?
Yes.
Beverly Rose?
Yes.
John DeBoyer?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief. 1F, DPW purchase two-inch water meters.
He's common.
Purchase of Zen water meters. And Mr. Serdi can provide us with a little information.
Yes, the purchase of these two water meters are needed to change the water meters at 3812 Point Trumbull Road, which is the trailer park right by the ferry. The length of the meter pit there is a lot smaller than what the standard size water meters are. So what I need to do is order two shorter two-inch water meters to replace those.
So those are $1,336 apiece?
Yes, sir.
And this is a preferred, let's move water as a preferred supplier, right?
EJP is our big supplier for cam strap water meters.
I'll make a motion to approve the water meter before I get back to you.
99 and 591-000746.00.
Looking for the cost of the...
$2,794.42 total for two.
I made the motion. Who's supporting it?
I'll support.
All right, roll call.
John DeBoyer?
Just one quick question. These are the radio reads like the rest of your...
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Yes.
Beverly Rose?
Yes.
Jerry Golka?
Yes.
Paul Cassidy?
Yes.
Tanya Hogan?
Yes.
Mark Burchard?
Yes.
Thank you.
Go to 1G, fire tower one repairs, fire tower two repairs. See if you can fill us in.
I met with our partners on the tower, Chief Don from Algonac and Mike Warshon from Ira. And Chief Don had the aerial, it's five-year inspection, safety inspection done on it. And inspector found a couple of things wrong with it. Number one, it had a leaky extension cylinder holding block and a broken threads on a cable section that retracts the aerial device on the left side. The cost for this will be $15,583.84. And then Clay Township would have to pay a third of that, which would be $5,194.61. The truck is 31 years old, excuse me. And that would be one-fourth of my budget, my maintenance budget this year. I was going to suggest that we would have somebody come in and appraise the truck to find out what it's exactly worth. We bought the truck in 2012. They paid $80,000 for it at that time.
That was used from New Baltimore? That was a used truck, right?
Right. They bought it from Macomb Township.
Macomb, okay.
Yes.
And what would a new cost, a new one?
You're looking over a million.
So this repair chief is split between Clay, Ira, Algonac, is that right?
Correct. And our portion would be $5,194.61.
So if you sold it, it'd all be split. What do you think it's worth?
I don't, I don't really know. I would have to have somebody come in that would give us an appraisal on it.
I'd hate to lose a tower. That's the only one we got.
Right.
Although it's seldom used, but when you need it, you need it.
Right. It's like an insurance policy.
Have we got any competitive bids on the repairs?
I believe this is the only one that can work on the truck. It's Apollo. I did not put it out for bid, but Chief Don did.
You only have one bidder?
He only has one bid. Yes, sir.
You know of any other bidders that can perform the inspection as well as these guys do?
Well, you mean the repairs, do the repairs on it? I'm sure there's other companies that could come in and look at it.
Well, our policies, procedures require any bid over $10,000. Actually, we made a non-disclosed bid. It has to be, and I know our share is 5,000, but if the whole thing's 15,000, shouldn't they put it out for bid? I suggest we table it until we get some bids on it.
Apollo fire truck is located in Romeo, Michigan. They're close and they do a lot of fire truck repair. I could go back to Chief Don and ask him to solicit for two more bids.
Have bids paid without disclosure.
Chief, do you know if this has gone in front of the board in Ira and the city of Algonac yet?
Yes, it has.
It has, and they both passed it?
Right.
Okay.
How long has it been out of service?
It's still in service, but it's limited service. We can't get a certificate that it passes safety inspection.
I think you ought to have a closed bid, but... I make a motion to put it off until we research this further and get some bids. Because I mean, the fire budget's very tight as it is. Spend money on one company and not getting competitive bids.
Not going to hurt anything if we delay it, is it, Chief?
We have about six months. The guy gave us to get the repairs done.
How long to do this job, Chief?
I'm not sure if they, they would probably have to order the parts for it. So we're probably looking a couple of weeks.
Do we have a motion for a closed bid set it off or? Make a motion. Any second?
I'll support that.
All right. We'll do a roll call.
Tanya Hogan?
Yes.
Mark Burchard?
Yes.
John DeBoyer?
Yes.
Paul Cassidy?
Yes.
Jerry Golka?
Yes.
Beverly Rose?
Yes.
Thank you.
Go to 1H, Champions Auto Ferry, SimCog sponsorship. You're Mr. Bryson?
I am. So good evening. I'm requesting a letter of support for SimCog. And this is to place the acquisition, building and acquisition of a new boat, or for them to sponsor the building of a new ferry boat to MARAD for the Marine Highway Program grant process. So this is the first step in the process. We have to have a project sponsored by the regional municipal organization, goes to MARAD, assuming that everything's good. Then I'm allowed to actually formally apply for the grant sometime next summer. So again, this isn't applying for a grant. This is the first step to allow me to become eligible to apply for the grant for a new vessel. And assuming we get to that point, this would be a 50-50 cost split. We'd kick in half and hopefully, assuming we're, sorry, words are escaping me right now, successful in the grant process, then the federal government would kick in the other 50%. So other than that, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
You know, I do, I know you met with Blue Water Area Transit. Did you, and they explained to you how to get Public Act 51 money, which you would be eligible for, which would cover half your operating costs. And if you sign an agreement with them, they could actually come in and reach an agreement with you contractually to operate it on your, for your benefit. Have you taken any further measures in investigating doing that? Have you taken any further measures in, in investigating doing that?
In order for me to look at Act 51 funds, they will not sign an agreement with Champions Auto Ferry directly. They are requiring us to sign an agreement with the Harsons Island Transportation Authority. Unfortunately, that authority's been running fast and loose with government monies, and I cannot in good conscience go into and enter into a partnership, because that's what it truly would be, with a entity that is having issues with audits and use of funds that they shouldn't have been used for.
Well, how about you yourself? Could you submit to an audit and show us a budget, as was requested of, of HIDA? Do you have any problem with that?
I do.
What's your problem with that?
Where's the authority requiring me to?
Nobody's requiring you to do anything. You're asking for probably 300, $3 million for a ferry with taxpayer money paying 3 million, and you paying 3 million if the ferry's 6 million, right?
Ferry'd be less than that, but...
What, what does the public get when you get that $3 million for the ferry? What, what benefit does the public receive?
If I'm going to go after this boat, which I am, the choice is, I can try and go this route and keep the costs down, or I can pass the entire bill on to the customers.
Well, that's true for anybody in private business, right?
Yeah.
How many other private businesses do you know get government money, grant money, to help to run their business?
Many shipyards, actually.
And you're not a shipyard, right?
Uh, yes, we are.
Do you consider yourself a shipyard?
We are a registered U.S. shipyard.
And, and you also a port authority as well?
No, we are not.
Okay, so just so I understand this correctly, so SEMCOG would be your sponsor?
That they would sponsor the project.
And basically, alls you're asking of the township board is to be the local support mechanism?
That is correct.
To tell SEMCOG that we're on board?
That is correct. SEMCOG requires the local municipality to say, yes, we agree with this project.
Okay.
There's no funds taken from Clay Township, there's no funds taken from the state of Michigan, actually.
So they're just looking to see that you have the community behind you?
That is correct.
In your business.
Yeah. And what you're asking for is the taxpayer to help you buy a ferry. Isn't that correct? Oh, the federal government, that money's free, it doesn't come from taxpayers? I thought the money that the federal government got came from taxpayers.
I'm asking to try and capture money that is for this purpose, that would go to a different community. It's going to get spent one way or another, I would rather have it come here.
Is that it? You're doing that out of the business of your heart for our community, that's very noble of you, but it's still taxpayer money, is it?
Yes, it is.
And you want taxpayer money to fund a private business? Is that right?
To an extent.
Well, completely. You know, the state of Michigan did a study a couple of years ago, and your father was interviewed, and he said he didn't want any public money.
Actually, he never was interviewed, nor was I. I can't speak to whoever put that in the study.
That's what they say, that's what they say.
Well, I would, you know, fair to say that Jacob is not his father, so can we, we can't base his business off of what his father did now, he's a new owner, a new, like, this is a totally different situation than what his father said. He could be taking the business in a totally different direction than what his father wanted.
Well, he's finally cleaning up the place, right? Finally cleaning it up, right?
I kind of need to, I have a barge pulling in there probably in the next couple of months.
I'm going to make a motion to approve the Champion Auto Ferry SEMCOG sponsorship.
Support.
MARAD, Marine Highway Program Grant Application.
Support.
Do you want to put in there that the supervisor or clerk can sign the letter? You want to make that in that motion?
Why, why do you want to do that?
I would say all the board members.
Why, why do you want to do that? Let the board members that support it sign it. Why don't we do that?
That's fine, we can all sign it.
Okay. And we have a motion to approve, second it. We'll do a roll call.
Beverly Rose?
Yes.
Jerry Golka?
No.
Paul Cassidy?
No.
Tanya Hogan?
Yes.
Mark Burchard?
Yes.
John DeBoyer?
Yes.
Thank you.
We've got 1I, DPW New Higher Healthcare.
So I added this to the agenda, Lance is coming up, because we've, we have the crew leader opening, the job opening, and we are running into a little bit of a problem. We have an excellent candidate who's interested in the position, but a number-one deal breaker for him is benefits. If he can't get benefits full-time, like, or if he can't get benefits right away, then he can't take the job. And he has an S1 and is extremely qualified, so I wanted to bring it to the board's attention, hoping that we can, you know, work something out to get somebody hired that we need in the DPW.
This is something that seems to be a deal breaker for a lot of people that have S licenses, that are moving from department to department. If they don't have healthcare because they have families, they are more apt to stay where they are as compared to coming to a different municipality.
So I would like to make a motion that we offer a DPW candidate, if it's a deal-breaker situation for them, healthcare starting right away.
Did you, um, did you interview anybody?
Yes, we have.
How many people?
Two.
Two?
Two.
Are they both S1?
No, they are not. One's an S1, one's an S3. S licenses are, seem to be few and far between out there. We've advertised it at the Eagle level, at the state level, we've advertised it at the county level, and we've advertised it at our, our level also.
So what's the current probationary period now?
90 days.
90 days, yes.
Mm-hmm. And when people have little kids, they don't want to take the risk of going, you know, three months without health insurance.
There's Cobra. So apparently, he wasn't vested in the company he was leaving.
Invested meaning what, Mark? He has coverage?
Time, time in service, and when you leave, you get, you get to carry over some of your benefits, including health. So apparently, that's not the case here.
Not normally, when you leave, you don't normally carry healthcare with you.
Depending on how long you've been there and what contract they have, so...
Could carry Cobra too, right?
Yeah.
Well, I, I mean, Cobra's something that would have to be paid on your own at that point.
I just have a problem, we're, we're setting a precedent here. What are we going to get, all the new hires that come in and say, we want benefits from day one?
Well, are we looking at this at a, for a specific situation, or is this a...
I'm looking at it for a specific situation.
Correct.
For this one.
And doing it legally wise?
Right.
Mr. Chair, legally wise, you did it for this person, somebody comes in, hire you, you did it for them, why can't you do it for me? Are you discriminating against me?
Not if it's done on a case-by-case basis.
Only if they're an S4.
Not if it's done on a case-by-case basis, I don't see that.
So, the way I'm understanding it, is we have a candidate, potentially, that you'd like to bring in with qualifications, is he, is that the situation? He's very qualified?
He's extremely qualified.
Extremely qualified.
Was this advertised?
Yes, it's been advertised for months. The candidate we're looking at has an S1, he's got 15 years of DPW service under his belt, he is currently running a different DPW department.
Who's he working at?
He's working for Clyde.
He's, he's currently in charge of a DPW now?
Yes.
Yes. And actually has a license one higher than mine.
So we're looking to make a special, special, this is a special circumstance that we're addressing, is what you're saying?
Correct.
And I'm assuming that there is some urgency to this, because you may not be sticking around that much longer?
I'm looking, I'm looking to retire in the near future, yes.
So are we saying this is a gentleman that could potentially come in and fill those shoes?
Yes. We are looking at this as, you know, he could take, he's, could take over Lance's position eventually, when Lance decides to leave. We have not found anybody who is as qualified as this person.
We've lost an S2, and we've lost an S3 with Jerry Don's retirement, and with Rob Schultz's retirement. We've lost an S2 with Jerry, we've lost an S3 with Rob.
Well, I know you're short-handed, and you're short-handed in qualified people, and I do understand, and I hope this board understands, the urgency of the situation. If Lance leaves, and we don't have licensed personnel down there to run that department, which is, which is an S2 or greater...
The state steps in.
The state steps in, and runs the department.
To me, it looks like a great succession plan.
Well, that's, that's what I was wondering.
I've been looking to do this for quite a while.
Yep. That is our goal, and we found an excellent candidate, but this is the one deal breaker for them.
So really, you're proposing that we hire this guy with this condition if the board approved it?
Yes.
And how does the union play into this?
The...
Is this something we're going to have to, uh...
We'll have to, we would have to do, uh, we figured we'd start at the board level here to see exactly what the board would do, and then talk to the union in the process of.
I think if we're going to do this, we might as well just, for everybody, we hire everybody, somebody in, they get medical right from the start. We're going to get sued over that. Somebody's going to say, you did it for this person, why aren't you doing it for me?
At one time, isn't the president...
But the problem is...
It's a case-by-case basis.
...that other people, the people that are getting hired, and they're going to sit there and say, well, you gave it to him, I, I think I ought to get it.
Right, exactly.
I can't argue with that either. Do we have a motion on this?
Yes, I made a motion.
All right, do we want to take a roll call?
We don't have a second, yet.
Anyone have one? Anyone going to second it?
So, tell me, here's my thought. What if we were to just bring this individual before the board as an official hire with this condition? Or are you trying to figure this out before we get to that point?
Well, we're trying to make sure that the board's going to go for it at this point, or otherwise, I can't expect the gentleman to leave...
So it's a deal breaker?
I can, I can't expect the gentleman to leave where he's at, unless it's, this is going to work out.
Gotcha.
Is it, is it accurate that some other S1s might be out there that would have said, you know, I would have applied for that, but I'm going to want to lose my healthcare for what I've got?
Well, we, we have had no correspondence whatsoever from anybody else with an S1.
Where do you think the cost of that, how was it advertised?
You'd have to ask HR that, I don't know, Mark.
What was that?
How was the, how was the employment ad advertised? 90 days, you get medical insurance?
Uh, it's actually not advertised.
What you said?
There's a description out there of the position.
On the position, doesn't it say 90 days?
No, it does not.
No. Usually, when you post a job, you just post a job, you know, stating what the job is, and we offer benefits, and then when they come in and you interview them, if we're interested, then you go through with the offer and tell them what they get.
For everybody?
Well, no one's made a second.
I'll support the motion.
All right, roll call.
Beverly Rose?
Yes.
Jerry Golka?
No.
Paul Cassidy?
No.
Tanya Hogan?
Yes.
Mark Burchard?
Yes.
John DeBoyer?
Yes.
You know, at the beginning of the meeting, I indicated, you're not supposed to disregard my instructions to not clap. You can all go outside and clap when you're happy about it. Not to disrupt the meeting, please.
You can't hear you, you're not talking into the mic.
Discussion of Addus Law Firm, one J. Who put this on the agenda?
I did. I added this to the agenda at our special meeting, we had amended the agenda at the beginning. I had found out some information that we cannot, if it's a special meeting, you cannot amend the agenda without all board members there. Maureen was not there, um, so I added it to this agenda to finish the business that was unfinished by a small technicality.
So, with that being said, I'll make a motion to terminate any future use of Addus Law Firm for any township matters effective immediately, and to make Seibert and Delosky the exclusive township attorney for all township business moving forward.
Support.
Any discussion? Take a vote? Roll call.
Jerry Golka?
No.
Tanya Hogan?
Yes.
Mark Burchard?
Yes.
John DeBoyer?
Yes.
Paul Cassidy?
No.
Beverly Rose?
Yes.
Now, what do we do with that? You know, I asked you once, and I'm saying to you twice, if you've got a problem here, you step outside. Yeah. What are we telling McNamee, what are we going to tell McNamee? He's fired too?
McNamee's not our township attorney.
He, he represents the township on all criminal cases.
He works for the police department.
Oh, he's not a township attorney?
Zoning, he works for zoning.
He's on zoning too? Well, I'll send him a letter, telling him he's been fired. We have, now we can go to public comments?
Well, actually, we have the 1K, the algae wheel was added, the agenda was amended.
Okay, let's do that.
I'm up? Yep.
You'd like to talk about the algae wheel?
Yeah, I would. There was just some confused, confusion, and I talked to Bryce, Bruce, a couple of times today, on who actually is doing what, because right now, there's two Eagle permits pulled, and two different, our, two different companies we've got doing, doing the same thing, and I just wanted some discussion on who's doing what, and what the direction of the board meant when, when we did that.
Mr. Schweikert, come on up. I, I know we talked about this as well. We, before you talk, Mr. Schweikert, we did vote to expend $20,000 with Bennett to do an assessment of the algae wheel. Mr. Schweikert believes that this causes a problem between, with Eagle, in that both Monti and Bennett are seeking Eagle's consent and a permit from them, and that it's causing some difficulty, is that correct?
That's part of it, yes.
Yeah, okay, go ahead.
Well, I'm, that's the big thing right now, is I just reading my emails today, that we have two people applying for totally different permits for the same plant. I think that's a terrible idea. Currently, the one is no mitigation fees, which is the one I would go for, but the other thing I'm getting worried about is with PCE still being in it, which I will say, I have no problem, but if they keep billing, what we have left in the fund keeps getting to be less. And if we leave the other firm, go to the eight weeks that's in the contract that you guys all have in front of you, that you have voted to let them go, if they can do it for the 1.8, we've got no one else even barking at that door. So, I'd like to keep on track, and I think, Paul, you have signed where Bennett is our representative with Eagle, haven't you?
I have, but, you know, it's, it's something that I know Mr. Monti has, has been working on as well, and I guess the board's got to decide, do we want to stick with one or the other, or do we want to continue the way we're going, and let them both make their presentations to Eagle?
I just don't know how that can work. It's like, the way I put it is, say, back in the day when I...
we wanna continue the way we're going and let them both make their presentations to Eagle?
I just don't know how that can work. It's like, the way I put it is, say, back in the day when I was building houses, you hire a builder to build a house and a lot, but you hire two builders with two different sets of plans. How do you get a building permit if one's building a two-story place and one's building a seven-story place? It's not the same thing. And I do not, boy, I do in a way, I guess saying this on TV or whatever, do I mind if I piss off Eagle? No, but in this particular case, yes, because I don't wanna have any more grief with them, and they're hard to deal with anyway.
Let me, let me put a question out here.
Yes.
If Benet's review comes back unfavorable, where's that leave us?
Pretty much screwed.
Yeah, well, that's why we got Monti still working on it.
Mont, but you can't have two, and Monti came in at 6.7 million. It's not like it's a near, this wasn't a swing and a miss in a ballpark. We aren't in the same stadium or same city, and I think John's here tonight, yeah.
Well, from what I understand, they were scaling it back to try and come within the budget, PCE was. They were working on a new proposal.
Right, but where I have, I'm not saying I have a problem with PCE. The problem I have is this essentially, call it the new start in February after the 6.7, is that John had told me two weeks, two weeks, two weeks, and nothing. And just to set a set of plans to follow things up with Eagle is not a cure. If he came up and said, "Right now, I'll do it for 1.7, sign the contract," it's his.
All right, well, why don't we have Mr. Monti come up when you're done, Mr. Schreikert, and we'll talk about this. Do you see around this problem here?
John Monti, project control engineering. So, this has been somewhat of a confusing process throughout this, the way that this has transpired. So, as you know, we were first targeting a wastewater treatment plant that was 25,000 gallons per day. It was a much larger plant. The township had anticipated additional grant money. When the chances of grant money diminished, you only had one grant. It was a $2 million grant that you received from MEDC. So, the process at that point became start over again and try to design something that would fit within the grant money that you have. So, to that end, we started working on that. We were, initially, we were stopped. We were told, "Stop," because we were out of grant money. Then we were told, "Go ahead and proceed, because we need to try to utilize the grant money that you did receive." There wasn't even a thought of actually trying to return it. So, the process became then, what can we do? What is the smallest plant that we can do? And what happened was One Water, who has the algae wheel process, which we're required to use because of the grant, we went to them and said, "Give us the smallest wastewater treatment plant that you have constructed or been involved with in the past." So, in fact, they did that. It was a 5,000 gallon a day plant, and they, they gave us basically the process that they were utilizing to meet our permit conditions. So, we had already been issued a NPDES permit for the discharge, and now utilizing algae wheels process, along with some other components, we have to make sure that we can meet that NPDES permit. We prepared construction drawings. We submitted preliminary construction drawings, I think back in June, to Eagle to get their initial review on, on what we were proposing. At the time, Eagle said, "Oh, wait a minute. This is a much different sized plant that you had proposed originally," or that One Water had proposed utilizing algae wheel, was a larger plant. So, and the way that process worked was this, um, algae wheel has not built or had a plant with their process in Michigan. So, they had to convince the Eagle group in Michigan that their processes would perform correctly and meet the permit requirements. They did that with the larger plant. So, they went through a process specifically, they dealt directly with Eagle, trying to get them to approve the use of their products. They received that. When we came back now and resubmitted to Eagle, we also asked One Water, "Give us a new basis of design, give us all the backup data that you had utilized in the smaller-sized plant," and we submitted to Eagle. Again, like I said, Eagle came back, said, "Whoa, wait a minute. This is a lot different. It's not what we talked about before." So, now we were left in the position of having to go back to Eagle again and try to convince them that the new components that we're using, the smaller scale, the different processes, were gonna be adequate to meet the permit requirements. In the meantime, the, I forget is, the, um, their technical, I think, at One Water, their technical advisor, Dan Johnson, the guy that did all the technology for us initially, was no longer with the firm. He left. So, they assigned it to a new person, to actually the guy that, from what I understand, invented the algae wheel process. He went through, and he has gone through the basis of design. He's come up with a couple of little component changes that he suggests that we make, and we just received that from them so that we can put that on the drawing and get back to Eagle with validation. They were also supposed to provide us, and we haven't received it just yet, with the previous plant, one of the ones that they built in another state, they were gonna give us some backup data from testing to validate that their process does in fact work and how, how well it works. So, we're waiting on that information. So, this has been a little bit of a process for us as well to be able to get through this process with Eagle. I doubt that someone else or another firm at this short of a period of time could have a set of drawings into Eagle. They may be discussing with Eagle what the process might be, but again, we've been working with them for quite a period of time now to try to get this validated. So, no matter who does it, it's gotta be validated by Eagle that their component processes will function. Then in the meantime, so we, we've been working on this. We've seen the different things. You did employ another company. Not sure how that came about. Unfortunately, I wish I could've been at the meeting to help clear up some information at the time, 'cause people didn't really understand. I think, uh, people didn't really understand where we were at in the process or how much that we had gone through to do that. So, anyway, that's kind of an update of where we're at right now. We have a pretty good set of construction drawings already completed.
Can you tell me, what do you think you can build it for?
I was reluctant to give you a number on it because of two things. One is, when we've talked before, it kinda went back and forth of, well, is, Benet is giving you a design-build price? And we were not. It wasn't apples to apples. We were doing a design, which is what our contract said we were supposed to do. We were doing a design in which we would then give it to contractors, go out to bids and get official, like, get three bids or however many people bid on the, the plant. So, that's a total different process than a design-build thing. So, if we're trying to compare, you know, dollars to dollars, that's not, I've got to either get a contractor on board, and I know we've had this discussion before, get a contractor on board and do this, a similar type thing with a lump sum, because I can't guarantee the price. I'm not a contractor. I would have to get one on board, as the other company did, and ask them to confirm or guarantee a price. So, we've been told to continue with the design, and then it would go out for bids, and so that's why we've done that. And with these little glitches that have taken place, like with the changing of the size of the plant, some changes that took place with One Water, and re-going back to Eagle, there's some component changes that have taken place that changed the price.
How can we resolve this with Eagle?
I don't have a problem with Eagle, honestly.
So, here's the thing. Benet's just gonna come to Eagle too and try to get approval for what they wanna build, right?
Well, they would, but they're, at this stage, I just don't think that they could be close to what we have. We have a complete set of construction drawings. I mean, they may be trying to go through with a, I, I can't speak for what they're trying to do. Eagle has to be convinced that the component process that you're using is gonna work, and I think they would give that to anybody. Doesn't matter who it is. It's not a problem with us with Eagle. There's no struggle with Eagle saying, "Oh, I can't do this right now," and talk to you and to talk to somebody else.
Can you give me the contact information for Eagle and I'll talk with them?
Absolutely.
Okay. 'Cause that seems to be the holdup here with Benet. And I can talk with them and see who they've been talking with as well.
I'll get you the information in the morning.
Okay, thanks, John.
Yep.
Mr. Schreikert, do you wanna add? Come on up, Mr. Schreikert. Do you wanna add anything?
Yeah. Um, one is with the Eagle. If John has, he's never told me, but how much the mitigation fee is. The day after you guys approved it last time, I had a face-to-face with the deputy director of Eagle and the division director of Eagle, and they're perfectly willing to work with Benet, and we think we have it worked out where there's no mitigation costs. And after three, four years, there's still mitigation costs with PCE when they're saying no.
I, I think the same thing's gonna be done. I know Senator Hertel has made a real effort.
He's helped a lot with that.
Regardless which plan we went to, they're gonna waive the mitigation.
I don't, because it's a different technology, 'cause I deal with this, with Eagle, or not with Eagle, with algae wheel, and my understanding is John's dealing on a whole different procedure than what Benet is. And they're not gonna share their technology. That was the whole thing about you guys, giving them, I don't know, I'm just, considering this has gone on three years, why not leave it, go out to the end of the eight weeks? It costs you nothing more and see what happens. But we can't have two people doing it.
We talk to Eagle tomorrow. I'll talk with you.
I really would like to see if you could, the board agree to go with what you did a couple of weeks ago and leave the eight weeks play out and see, and if it doesn't work out, then we're back to square one.
I don't wanna start at the beginning.
Absolutely, that's why I'm saying, leave the eight weeks play out that the contract you've already signed.
Yeah. I'll second. Thank you. Anybody have any further discussion? All right, we'll go to public comment.
Good evening, Sarah Clements. Mr. Golka and Mr. Cassidy, it's great to see you both today. Thanks for showing up and staying for the whole meeting. If you could actually listen and pay attention when the people are addressing you, that would be wonderful. Your behavior at the special meeting was embarrassing for our community. As people who are supposed to be leaders, we not only expect more, we deserve way better. Thank you to the four of you for finishing the meeting in a professional manner, manner and actually hearing the wishes of your constituents. Mr. Golka's behavior on social media continues to be incredibly troubling and damaging to our township.
Ms. Clements, we're gonna talk about township business, not social media, okay?
I thought public comments, we're allowed to say whatever we want.
Public comment is on township business.
That's what the agenda items...
So, if you wanna talk about that, that's fine.
Well, his, him being an elected official in, in a position, everything that he does on social media and how he presents himself in this township is township business.
So, that's your, your belief?
No, it's not my belief, it's the whole room's choice. I'll go to, okay, I'll just continue to say what I'm gonna say, 'cause I don't think an officer will move me for my three minutes of public comments. If they want to, then I guess they can. Mr. Golka's behavior on social media continues to be incredibly troubling.
Again, I'm gonna tell you again, I'm gonna instruct you, you out of order.
He is...
You're here to talk about something dealing with township business.
This is township business.
No, it isn't. Social media is...
It is. You, just because you don't wanna hear it, doesn't mean that it's not business.
Again, I'm, I'm just telling you, please.
He's the treasurer of this township.
Talk about that.
What he does, I am.
You'll talk about...
Maybe he should stop playing on social media and calling people that they have mental health issues.
Maybe you should direct your comments to township business.
Okay. This is our time to be able to discuss concerns that we as residents have with the board and the elected officials. Nowhere, this is not a courtroom.
Non-t township business.
It is not non-t township. Just because you don't want Mr. Golka...
Social media is not part of the township.
It is, because do you wanna know what his, Jerry Golka, Clay Township treasurer, that makes it township business? I don't care that you don't care. I know that you don't care. It's very obvious you don't care. If Mr. Golka wants to continue to badmouth people from his personal account, by all means, be my guest, but to act as a township official in such an ill manner is simply despicable and irresponsible. Regarding your September and October town, out-of-town trainings, I would strongly ask you to reconsider going to these trainings. Do the ones that are online, go to the local ones, and have BSNA come in and train you hands-on. The people, the board, and the board have all expressed concern, and you simply don't care. Your department will be short-staffed already and going into audit time when you've already been struggling to do your job. Leaving for out-of-town events seems incredibly irresponsible. It doesn't seem like a supportive thing to do to your staff and as a leader of their department. I also don't know the legalities of other department heads doing the Treasury Department's work, but the Treasury Department is your department, and you need to pick up the weight when your staff isn't able to. That means showing up to help in person, not just doing most of your work from home, as you stated you do online. Mr. Cassidy, you just had the opportunity to support a local business and help get a new ferry boat in our community, which you've said is unsafe and you've spoken out about several times, but you voted no. If that doesn't prove you have your own agenda, I'm not sure what, what would. I will remind you again, this is not your courtroom. Your time as a judge has ended. You aren't the sole ruler here. You aren't the final decision-maker. Your vote is the same as Tanya, Mark, John, or Bev. You were elected by the people, and you are expected to show up and do your due diligence for our community.
Thank you for your kind comments.
If you don't want to, because your ferry pipe dream is tumbling...
Please have a seat.
Okay, I'm on my last sentence.
Please have a seat.
You took most of my time.
I gave you an added minute. Please have a seat.
I will, I will as soon as I finish this. You don't want to, because your ferry pipe dream is tumbling down right before your very eyes, and you can resign. I don't think the majority of us would be sad to see you go.
Can you speak here?
Come on up, Mark.
They know they gotta be ready for you.
I'm dangerous, right? Well, first of all, Mark Coletti, Harson's Island, I'm glad to hear HEITA's gonna have a meeting. They've had a streak of 30 unanimous votes, so you're gonna witness something, history, if they have a dissenting vote, so it's very important, and you'll tell your grandkids about it. So, HEITA claims that they only have to meet once per year. That's not indicative of a volunteer organization. Doing something once a year is more like a holiday where you spend time with your ignorant in-laws about politics. So, I don't know how they can claim to be a volunteer organization, but limit the number of board members to five. Shouldn't all people who wish to volunteer on HEITA be allowed? Why isn't HEITA a seven-person board or a nine-person board? Like, in a normal volunteer organization, they say, "All hands on deck." But in HEITA, they say, "We only need five volunteers and only if Harold Bane likes you." Now, the Times-Herald article from January 21st, 2024, Harold Bane claimed, quote, "We are an independent agency tied to Clay Township very loosely." Very loosely? Shouldn't HEITA be securely connected to Clay Township? Shouldn't the HEITA board be held to the same standards as the trustees board, the planning commission, and the zoning board? How can HEITA be loosely connected to Clay Township residents when the residents of the island were simultaneously levied a 4.5 millage on precinct four residence? By the way, I hope everyone with their taxes does the four-and-a-half millage, see what you would've paid for it, and then multiply by five, 'cause a millage would've gone for five years. Now, if HEITA's a state agency, which I've heard, no one actually knows, how can it violate Michigan law, MCL 124.546, section two, regarding quarterly meetings? By the way, I hope Harold has quarterly meetings, not just one. And lastly, how is HEITA a state agency if the HEITA board is appointed by locals, specifically the Clay Township supervisor and Hiscva? So, in summary, we have the worst transportation authority in the state. We need to remove HEITA Chair Harold Bane. We need to reinstate regularly scheduled quarterly meetings with open public comments. Thank you for your time.
My name is Ann Ortell. I live at 8312 South Channel Drive on Harson's Island. This is my husband, Dean. We want to address something that's in your goals on your website. Goal number one, to protect people and property, and goal number... And goal number seven, to help influence regional and state issues and decisions. Our home is on the Mayberry Cut. The Mayberry Cut is a unique waterway between the South Channel and Muskeamut Bay. It is the largest. It is the widest opening at the South Channel. It's the deepest, it's the only one with a fuel station, it's the only cut large enough and deep enough for boats, larger than a small fishing boat. Most importantly, it is a no-wake zone. It by far gets more traffic than any other cut-through and is amongst the most utilized with the entire Flats area. The Mayberry Cut needs assistance from the Clay Township Board of Commissions. On a daily basis, we see numerous boats and PWCs violate this no-wake zone. On a weekend basis, we see hundreds, if not thousands, of violations. This is because people ignore the rules of the water and lack the understanding of boater safety. They're hugely distracted with the skills needed to traverse the area. There are no buoys and no signs to signal to boaters that it is a no-wake area. And sometimes people don't know or understand the rules of the water. Those who have not been through the Mayberry Cut need in-water visual aids to know when the no-wake area begins and ends. This behavior is endangering the safeties of kayakers, swimmers, fishermen, other boaters, people on platform rafts, and people who live on the cut that are getting on and off watercraft. Over the seven years that we have owned our property at 8312 South Channel, we have observed that the area has become increasingly dangerous. This area has increasingly more violators and increasingly worse behavior, including when we signal boaters by asking them to adhere to the no-wake rule. We shout at them, we'll ask, we'll put our hands down, we'll make a sign with our thumb. We get a response where they might flip the bird, they might ignore us, they might laugh or go faster. Sometimes a driver will slow down and apologize. Other times, when we attempt to record the behavior on our phone, people might slow down. Here's what we are petitioning for: two no-wake buoys placed in the Mayberry Cut at the opening on the South Channel, signs for both sides of the bridge, four large no-wake signs that can be placed on seawalls and we can help find locations and get permissions, as we have neighbor support, and better enforcement. It's important to note that McDonald Island has a buoy. There are buoys in front of the Old Club. The Middle Channel has buoys shortly downstream from where it branches off on the North Channel. We have previously sent letters to the Township Supervisor, the MDNR, the U.S. Coast Guard, the U.S. County Sheriff Marine Division. We've received a few responses, but each one has not been followed up on, so we decided to approach you in hopes of getting some action. Our number-one reason for this petition is to protect the lives of people who participate in water activities, including our two-year-old granddaughter who loves to swim. Many dangerous conditions exist in this location. It's not a matter of if we will see a dangerous accident, but when we will. We witness near misses regularly, and even our guests have made statements about how dangerous it is that they're speeding right out from under the road viaduct eastward toward the South Channel. The potential is imminent, and we'd like to have this letter put into the record so that the Clay Township Board of Commissions has a chance to review it, determine necessary actions, and act upon this serious situation. It's our goal to not have a preventable tragedy in the Mayberry Cut. We sincerely appreciate your shared concern and look forward to hearing what will be done to alleviate this dangerous situation in a timely manner. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Can I just add that, you know, we've boated in the area, in the flats and around the Harson's now for 30 years. And what we see in front of our house, any particular weekend, sometimes even weekday, is the worst boating behavior I've ever seen. I mean, I'm a, I started driving boats when I was 11 years old, and I've never, and it has gotten worse. I mean, I'll tell you, one, after this, I'll stop talking, but one of the worst behaviors at this particular cut is if they come out from under the Mayberry Bridge, where you have walkers on one side, and they just pass under the bridge, a lot of personal watercrafts will floor it right there. By the time they get to the South Channel where they should be all no-wake, they're going 40. I mean, this doesn't happen once in a while. This happens every weekend. So it's mayhem in the Mayberry, it is. And we enjoy the Mayberry Cut, we enjoy looking at all the traffic, we enjoy seeing ducks go by, but what we don't want to see someday is somebody die there or somebody get seriously injured there. And it's inevitable, the way it is now.
Can we approach with our letter?
Sure.
Thank you for.
I don't even know what you're talking about.
We have pictures in case people need more years, and then we have letters for support from neighbors.
Perfect.
Does anyone have any questions?
Hi, good evening. My name is Heather Jacqua. I live at 9642 Island Drive. And I just wanted to, first, I didn't want to speak out of turn. It is difficult to hear you in the audience. We've been coming the last couple months, and every night I said, what did they say? It's really hard. And the audience can hear me now, because I'm inches from the microphone, but some of you guys are three feet away from your microphones. We can't hear you, you're just at a regular speaking tone.
They just record.
Sorry?
They just record, they don't project their voice out there, that's why.
They do. We can hear.
I thought they didn't.
Forgive me, at the end, I can hear you and I can hear you guys on the bookends. But it is difficult to hear you guys, it really is. I have notes. I wanted to, wait, where did my notes go? Darn it, okay. So burnt-out windows, or blown-out windows, rather, an overgrown yard, crumbling walls, big gaping holes, a caving roof, and my personal favorite, the Big Buford hamburger sign that was covering somebody's boat. That is what we live next door to. It's a condemned property. We moved in coming on five years now, and at the time, it was occupied, but it was in shambles then. And we would frequently call in and say, hey, the guy's got to mow the lawn. And we had conversations, we submitted formal, you know, letters and requests of, we need some control next door. And the city would respond and say, we know about it, we know, we're building a case, the owner has several properties in the community that we're going to put it all together in one lump sum and take it to court, we're going to take legal action. And that did happen, in March of 2024, it went to court. The case was filed, and it took six months to get through, but the final judgment was signed September 11th. And the final judgment, in summary, was, he's got 60 days to get the property up to code, otherwise Clay Township takes over and then you guys can destroy the building, because it has been condemned already. Well, that 60-day deadline was October 25th, which is 10 months ago, as of today. 290, almost over 300 days, and still nothing. We have come and submit the proper paperwork formally through the city, the township, and made formal complaints, and we still haven't heard anything back. And I think that's the frustrating part. We live next door to this, and we are in a brand-new construction home. We're so proud to be there. We love this home, we love this township, we're proud. But when you're in a shiny new home and you live next to Big Buford Hamburger, it's embarrassing. And frankly, it is concerning. There's windows that are not in the home, it's, you know, pests, kids live in the neighborhood, are they going to crawl into the crawl space that's open and available for kids to get into, not to mention the feral cats that are living there? It's embarrassing, it is more than just that. It's a safety concern, it really is. And so what I want from our township is to enforce the code. You took it to court, you made the move, but nothing's happened. What is the holdup, is basically the question I really have. And we just haven't heard anything, and that's my 10 cents, so thank you very much.
At the May 27th meeting, Mr. Cassidy admitted OHM started work only on his signature. His words, they did work on my signature, waiting for me to ratify it, and we did ratify it. That is an open acknowledgement that OHM acted without board authorization and only on his unilateral unauthorized act. At the March 6th special board meeting, there was approximately seven minutes of conversation on the topic of a feasibility study for alternative transportation to Harson's Island, including Marine's motions, discussion period, and vote. Now, during the several minutes of discussion period, Cassidy insulted citizens who were present at the meeting, had police escort some citizens out of the meeting, suggested they work on the recall, stated that he wasn't even going to bother wasting his time speaking. And when Marine asked, do we want to discuss anything so people understand what it's all about, he said, these people don't care. What is really interesting is that Marine's motion never mentioned OHM, a contract, or any vendor to do a feasibility study. OHM was never mentioned throughout the discussion period, or even when Marine was asked to read her motion again, so that they would know what they were voting on. Jury did second her motion, and there was a roll-call vote that did pass. The motion that was made and passed at the March 6th board meeting only approved a budget allocation for a feasibility study in general. It did not mention OHM in her motion that Marine made, and therefore never approved an actual contract with them. Marine's exact motion stated, make a motion to approve the feasibility study for alternative transportation to Harson's Island GL line blah 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 blah, $150,000. Under Michigan law, only the board can authorize contracts, and Cassidy has no authority to bind the township on his own. That means the OHM contract remains void, the $51,000 payment was improper, and Cassidy himself may be personally liable for authorizing work without approval. When Mr. Cassidy signed a $150,000 contract on December 30th without board approval, he set a dangerous precedent that will follow this township and every taxpayer into the future. This isn't about being for or against a feasibility study. It's about whether we live under rules or whether officials get to make them up as they go, as Mr. Cassidy likes to do. Contracts require board authorization, it's the law.
Thank you for your kind remarks, ma'am. You had three minutes, please sit down.
If this backroom deal is allowed to stand, if it tells every future board, they can ignore the rules, sign contracts behind closed doors, and then stick the taxpayers with the bill after the fact.
Any further comments?
Artie Bryson, 8356 South Channel, I got a few comments. On the fluoride, I'm not a fan of fluoride. And I think it was the first month I was supervisor, I toured the water plant in Elgin Act, and they had a big 55-gallon drum for fluoride, you've seen it, and it looks really corrosive and disgusting and everything else. It looks rough. And what was really scary, there's a big sign, poison, with a skull and crossbones. And then, right above it is a product of China. We were buying our fluoride from China, which was scary to me. And Clay Township caused Elgin Act to switch that and buy it from a domestic supplier. At that time, we were putting in, the Elgin Act plant was putting in the bare minimum fluoride. Can you check to see what levels we're putting fluoride in now? One question. On the no-wake buoys, I was in office, we caused, you got a petition to DNR to have the no-wake buoys, we did Middle Channel, a couple of them on there, and the SNI for those no-wake buoys. You got to start at the DNR, I can give you their contact info, and that's where you'd start the process. And it takes about six months. I'm glad you were talking about the bidding process that you talked about. Couple meetings ago, you awarded $20,000 to, what's the company, Anthony Bennett? But if that goes through, that's a no-bid contract for $1.8 million. So you're waiving your $10,000 requirement for a bid on that deal. So I would, it's fine that they do it, but I strongly advise that it would go out to bid. Thank you.
Joseph Garden, 3rd Street. Congratulations, Jerry, you got me fired. That's, that's what you did. Congratulations. I'm such a big, mean guy that the same person that you were to. This is my time to speak, don't you talk to me right now. This is my time.
Sir.
No.
The rules are, you talk about township business.
The rule of public comments, you don't talk to me.
Nothing further.
Nope. I will speak what I want to speak about.
You're not going to be it, I'm going to ask you to leave.
I will speak what I want to speak about.
I'm going to ask you to leave.
Do not care.
You can talk about township business, you don't come here and make this.
First Amendment rights.
The First Amendment is not.
Jerry Golka can't talk to anyone, especially a female, without disrespecting them online. I challenge you to come speak to someone else like a man, like you speak to females online. Dare you to do that one time to any end of the conference.
I'm just going to do this one more time, sir.
I'm not listening to you. This is my three minutes, Mr. Cassidy. It's time for you to listen to me speak.
I would ask the police to remove you.
No, it's not happening. This is First Amendment rights. I am not leaving.
Sue me.
I will sue you. Thank you for the offer. I have not had my time, sir. I have three minutes to speak. I have three minutes to speak. Please don't do this, I don't want to sue the law, I don't want to sue the county. I'm asking you, please don't do this. Are you threatening to arrest me? Is this, is this a threat to arrest? Because I haven't.
You remember what we talked about last week?
Yes, and I haven't said anything against the law. This is my public time, correct?
Let me explain this. You have been warned, you've been given another warning. He's following the rules, okay?
Of?
Now, the rules, three warnings, he's within his rights. Now, I'm coming up here and saying it's time to go.
This is my public comment, sir.
It's time.
Who could tell me what I could say in public comments?
I can tell you what to say, and that you can't say, sir.
Sir, I really don't want to be put in handcuffs, for real. I'm not asking. You're going to put me in handcuffs, then. I really do not want to be put in handcuffs. I'm under threat of arrest.
Then just walk out.
This is my First Amendment right, I don't want to sue you guys. I am begging you, let me speak. This is my First Amendment right. There is no warning. There is no warning. This is an open public meeting. This is a constitutional right, man. Are you threatening to arrest me? Just say yes or no. You are threatening to arrest me.
I'm asking you to step away.
I'm not going to do that, sir.
What's that?
I'm just letting you know, it is my time to speak. He can yell at anyone he wants to, I can't speak.
You have to stick to something that pertains to township business.
Okay, so him arresting my friend. Okay, so him harassing my family isn't township business?
As far as what you've got going online, if there's harassment or anything like that, then you need to come see us and file a complaint. Okay? That is something outside of this. What you're doing here right now is you're going after him for that, not something that the township themselves do.
This is township business.
You're going after a man that's personal. Okay?
No, he's, he's a public official. He got me fired as a public official.
I understand what you're saying. Listen, I spent all day on the phone with our attorney today.
And he knows you're going to get sued.
No, she, she is very well instructed me of where we need to go. What I ask is you gear this towards something that is township-related. If he's doing this as the township treasurer, why is it? But that's not how you came up. But then you also went into a threatening posture with him, okay? And you called him out. You can't do that either.
Is that a judgment call?
Okay, you shouldn't have done that.
Is that a judgment call? Are you making that judgment? That was threatening.
I can go by your words.
What words?
When you said to him how he likes to go after other women, well, I'm a man. You come at me. What does that say?
I just offered.
That's threatening words.
The doors were open.
Okay? I ask you, sir, give him his minutes, okay? But you need to stick towards Mr. Galca as treasurer, not something other than that and him sitting at home, okay?
He did that as treasurer.
Okay, then that's what you need to stick him. You cannot be threatening.
I wasn't trying to threaten nobody.
Well, come across as threatening.
My loud voice is threatening. I get it. Mr. Galca, I please ask you to please resign in the sweetest, most kindest way possible, okay? And I will be contacting your lawyer tomorrow because you will not let me comment even on Facebook. So that's why it gets brought here. Yes, it is, it is township thing, and yes, it is against the law to take away comments, even on a Facebook post, because that is, you are running it as a township treasurer, loosely used treasurer. But, and also, why are other people, why is the supervisors' people taking cash payments for taxes? Why is that happening? Why are you posting on Facebook that these, these rates that are last year's rates, Jerry? Are you charging people more? You probably don't even realize it, do you? Because you're using stuff that Kristi Hilton has made, not you. Thank you.
There's no further comments. We move on to...
I agree with the fluoride. We don't need the fluoride. Fluoride's poison. You can put it on your tickets, but you can't put it in your stomach. It's not good for you. And as far as the Ferry and the Haida, Haida was given $250,000. The first study only cost 60, and they don't, they spent the rest of the money, and they don't know where it is. So the Ferry cannot get involved with them because they're under, being checked out for where they spent this money. So they cannot get involved with Haida. And my other thing is, I would like to update on the Treasury Department of what is happening. Can you reconcile bills yet? Has, had the bills been taken care of? And I think it's really troubling that the treasurer wants to leave on a retreat at our most busiest time when you're shorthanded. And I also would like Jerry to resign if he can't take care of business.
There's no further comment? Oh, we have Mr. Bryson coming back.
So Jake Bryson, I apologize. Something's been kind of nagging at me a little bit here. Can anyone tell me, provide a meeting minutes where the board, through a resolution ordinance or even a policy, adopted, formally adopted Robert's Rules of Order for the running of your meetings? Because there's no state or federal law that requires it. And I know the board speaks on behalf of the township through their votes, not any one individual. So again, just a question is, before you tell someone I have to follow it, can you provide a policy that states that, that the board's voted on? Thank you.
If there's no further comment, oh, we have someone else.
Kristi Bottel, Fruit Street. I just have a question about the Jerry Galca Clay Township Treasurer Facebook page. Is that an official government Facebook page where you represent the Clay Township as the treasurer? Because that's where all these comments are coming from, where people are questioning how your character is. And I don't understand why it's not considered township business when people are bringing those up. As a business owner, if I post on my business page, under my official business name, I am representing my business, and I could be sued as my business. So I don't understand the difference of why it's not township business. So it's very confusing as a resident when you're commentating. So, but that's all I have to say.
Susan Bryson, just one request. Jerry, please resign.
Thank you. We'll go to board comments. Mr. DeBoyer.
So I was just curious how our meeting went with UHY. Did you guys get a start date time for our audit?
Oh, I was actually going to bring that up in my board member comments.
Oh, okay. Then I'll let you, I'll let you take it. Thank you. And then I was just curious on our, on the reconciliation process, have we got everything reconciled, Jerry, as far as the township's township?
It's about halfway done right now.
Halfway?
Yes.
Okay. And do you think that...
We're doing a general ledger, and I'm doing the rest of the reconciliations.
Okay.
DDA and HRA accounts and tax counts.
It's come along well? I mean, it's something you think that when they're done, you're going to be able to handle it month to month?
Yeah.
Okay, very good. Mark, did you ever get a digital copy of the OHM feasibility?
Uh, no. He said he couldn't do it, and so I'm going to ask.
I gave you, I offered you to.
I know. I'm going to ask him tonight if I can now take it and, but leave it here. I'll come to the, I'll get an open room and read it.
Sure. Sure.
And I think, I mean, I want to do a little research to get the right info, but I think that we as a board should pursue this no-wake issue in the Mayberry Cut. I'm, I'm really familiar with, with that area, and I think it's a valid concern. So I don't know how the rest of the board feels, but I think it's important to at least look at it. So just congratulations and welcome aboard to Miles Hodjanaki and Evan Coldingur, and congratulations to Parks Man on the promotion. That's all I got.
Mark?
Uh, we have a planning commission on this coming Wednesday on the 27th. It's an open hearing for a proposed rezoning from a C2 to District R1 on Williams Road on Harson's Island. We also have a proposed outdoor recreation agenda, basically about campgrounds and a sign ordinance draft we're reviewing, along with the Clay Township master plan. All I have.
Tanya?
Okay, so we did have our meeting with UHY, and because of all, we have taken, so because of all the ARPA funds and the grants we've received, we are at a different type of audit threshold now because those are all federal funds. So it's going to be quite a bit more extensive. UHY used to assist with all the closing, end-of-the-year closing stuff, but where we're sitting now, they cannot do that. They did suggest that we use Manor because they'll be familiar, but I will reach out to other companies and get quotes and bring them to you because we will need assistance in closing everything out. And then UHY will be able to do our audit. And they have given us access to the website they use so we can start uploading stuff and get the process started. And then my other board member comment is I have spoken with OHM, and they will be here at the next meeting, September 8th, to answer any questions and give us updates and let us know, you know, what exactly they did. And then that's all I have. Only congratulations to the new hires and Parks Man for being promoted.
Beverly Rose?
Well, I'll start off with that. Congratulations to the new employees and to Parks. I've known him like 1,000 years. The Harson's Island Turkey Shoot is this weekend. Pancake Breakfast is Sunday at the fire station. Hope to see you. I think this meeting went very calm and very good, and that's exactly what you deserve. Thank you, Supervisor.
You're welcome. Mr. Galca?
No comments.
I do have a few things to say because people did ask some questions. I know Mark doesn't quite understand that the Haida is a product of a board resolution many, many years ago, and that's why when the board drafted that resolution, they set certain parameters, and that's for membership and so forth. So Haida's following the law as it's identified in the ordinance. On this no-wake zone, certainly we'll try to do what we can. Water belongs to the Sheriff's Department, actually. We don't have any authority over the water. And, but we'll make efforts with the Sheriff's Department and the Coast Guard. And if the DNR will, will do that, we'll make contact and see what we can do. That house that that young lady was complaining about on Island Drive, I'd like to get a resolution to have that torn down as soon as possible. I know the owner, he's a nice fellow, but he just doesn't get anything done. And it's time that that house get torn down. So I would do, I would agree to do what we have to do. This bid, 1.8 million on this, that's not what we bid on. We haven't, but we're kind of in a tough spot here because when this job was first, when they first started it, it was one thing, and then Mr. Bryson expanded it, which caused a delay and everything and caused the entire project to grow. And then when we finally realized it's 6.6 million, and it was crazy, I did what I could to get it reduced. And Mr. Monty has, I know, worked hard on it. I've talked to him many, many, many times. I've talked to Anthony at Benich, and perhaps tomorrow we can get somewhere on that Eagle issue. Mr. Bryson, I think it's page 31 or 33 of our policy manual that says that we are to run our, our meetings according to Robert's Rules of Order. Other than that, I have nothing to add. With that, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second, anyone?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, named?
motion.